Further ahead.
That is correct now by the cell phone.
All right, sounds good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let's call the October 21st, 2014 meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board to order. Cover a few housekeeping items. Let me appoint Nelson to sit in and vote for Mike tonight. I'll remind everyone to please sign in. Make sure the microphones are turned on. Speak clearly into them so the folks at home can hear you. Let me also announce that there's a site walk scheduled for this Saturday, October 25th at 9:00 a.m. at the Flatley Conditional Use Permit Application Parcel. So that's meeting at the St. Gobain parking lot. The public can attend those if they're interested. If you're interested. The next planning board meeting has been rescheduled to avoid Election Day and is now scheduled for November 18th at 7:30 p.m. in the Matthew Thornton Room. The next bike, pedestrian, and subcommittee meeting will be November 4th, 7:30 p.m. in this room. And with that, the next item on our agenda is a Planning and Zoning Administrator's Report. What have you for us, Jillian?
I don't have anything today.
Any questions by members of the board? Okay. Moving on to item number three on the agenda is Tamejian Drive. LLC is the applicant and the Stephanie Tamejian Revocable Trust is the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a 19-lot cluster subdivision located at Tamejian Drive in the R1 Residential Aqua Conservation and Flood Hazard Conservation Districts and Shoreland Protection Area Tax Map 4B Lot 9-1. The item is continued from the September 23rd, 2014 Planning Board Meeting, and the applicant has requested another continuance to the November 18th meeting. Should the board grant that continuance, the motion should so indicate that it'll be on November 18th, 7:30 p.m. in this room with no further public notice.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the request of the applicant and that the meet this matter will be continued on until November the 18th at 7:30 p.m. in this room and that Noah Abutters will get no further notification will be sent to Abutters.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Second by Nelson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4002, grant that continuance. Item number four on our agenda is Public Service of New Hampshire Eagle Substation Expansion. This is review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a site plan to expand the Eagle Substation. The parcel is located at 23-Star Drive in the I-1 Industrial Aqua Conservation and Flood Hazard Districts. Jillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
They're here with a plan to expand the substation, and I'll let them explain the plan.
Very good. Thank you very much. Please introduce yourself and tell us about the project.
I'm Tom, this is the project manager for the Eagle Substation Expansion.
Is your microphone turned on? I'm getting a little notification from the folks that it isn't.
A nice bright green light.
Got it?
Yes.
Please introduce yourself again so the folks at home can know.
I'm Hotten Snow. I'm the project manager from PSNH for the Eagle Substation Expansion. And I'd also like to introduce the rest of the guests with me. Chuck Christensen, he's with Substation and Protection Control Engineering at PSNH. We have Joe Sperry, he's with Civil and Line Engineering at PSNH. Dana Lynch is on the end. He's from Height Engineering. He's a consultant that did the site design. And Deb Zadaguer from GZA Geotechnical, they are environmental consultants.
Okay.
And at this point, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Chuck Christensen. He's going to talk about the need for the substation expansion.
Thank you, Hotten. Like you said, I'm Charles Christensen. I'm with the New Hampshire Transmission. I'm the Substation Engineer, Protection Control Supervisor. As the application says, and first of all, thank you all for seeing us tonight, and hopefully we'll get, go through the plans and answer any questions the board has. This is, as you said, an expansion of the existing site. It's part of the regional ISO New England Regional Planning Studies. This was a solution that the region of New England came to, to continue to expand that substation site, place an auto transformer in there, which takes a power from the really extremely high voltage levels, transforms it down to the lower voltage that are at Eagle right now, and then feeds it out through the system. It's part, again, a part of a whole regional solution, and this is just another piece of that bigger solution. So there's other, as you drive through the state, you'll see other upgrades ongoing through New England, and this is just a piece that was deemed by New England that would be the most cost-effective would be to put it here in Merrimack. And that, I was, I'll answer, I'm certainly available for any questions the board might have anytime this evening, but I would turn it over to the people that came here to talk about the detailed plans of it.
Okay. Who's that?
Thank you.
Right now, we'd like to turn it over to Dana Lynch from Height Engineering.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll try to keep my remarks brief. I think that I can cover the essence of what this expansion is all about in fairly short order. I'm sure some of you may recall the approval for this original substation about four years ago. If you remember, Star Drive terminates just before the railroad tracks. That's our primary access. Agreements were worked out with the railroad and also with the town, including the fire department, to extend a gravel driveway across the railroad tracks. It's protected by gates on both sides, and you have to be in the accompaniment of a representative of public service in order to gain access to the site. So it's very strictly controlled. We are not changing that gravel accessway into the site whatsoever. That remains intact or as it was originally laid out. The essence of the expansion is approximately 300 feet by 280 feet to the north, 380 feet, I'm sorry. If you can see the drawing that I've placed over there that's in color, the modeled area, if you will, is the existing substation. The grayer area with the heavy black dots in it from where your vantage point is, is the expansion area. So that's, basically gives you a locus for it. It's key that it line up with the existing equipment. It is set, the pad that this is all set upon is constructed in the same manner as the current station at the same grade, so we have a uniformity in the presentation of the completed substation. The only change that we really needed to make to our site plan subsequent to our submission is the rerouting of a, what we call a distribution line around the perimeter of the site. I have a set of plans, but if, I don't know how the microphone system works here, or how I can point it out. Grab that one and walk over.
Yeah.
Our original site plan did not have the distribution line that I was just speaking of, which basically runs from this location, this terminus point here, up around the station, and then back down. And what that does is it replaces a distribution line that currently traverses this area right through here. So in other words, it comes up around the horn and back down again. Basically, again, we're just pushing that whole distribution line to the north. It does require that we do some tree clearing here on the embankment. One note I would like to make, a change that I just learned about this evening, is that we are currently showing approximately a 50-foot setback of trees from the distribution line. We can reduce that to no less than 25 feet. We'll do that in this area particularly right through here, as the trees that we were showing as being cleared, many of them lie on a slope, and we prefer not to do that if possible. So we're going to pull that tree clearing line to within, not less than 25 feet from the distribution line. Other than that, there are no changes to the plan. I just wanted to make you aware of that one item. The other item that is worthy of notation is the drainage system. And again, the drainage system was designed as a perimeter swale, if you will, a drainage swale. We have very permeable soils in the area that lend themselves well to absorption of a considerable amount of runoff, but we have gone through the original calculations for the original station. We agree with the premises and the assumptions that were included in those. They did have an alteration of terrain permit issued for the site during the original permitting process. We have prepared a new drainage analysis to reflect the expansion of the site, of the station. We are utilizing the same detention infiltration basin that was designed in the original proposal, and we found that during the 10-year, in the 10 and, I'm sorry, the two and 10-year storms, that we do not change any kind of level in that pond. During the 50-year storm, the level in the pond increases by one inch. We found that to be acceptable. We've, as I said, put together new drainage calculations that are included in a new alteration of terrain permit to be submitted to New Hampshire DES for approval. We have met with DES just to understand what the parameters were, given the uniqueness of the situation. We've had a pre-application conference with them, and they are, they understand where we're going with this, and I do not anticipate any issues with their approval. The only other permit that I'm aware of that we need to get into will be a shoreline permit, because we are doing work within the 250-foot Shoreland Protection District. And Deborah's group, GZA, will be handling that application. And again, that application will reflect the modification of the tree clearing limit that I just spoke of. There were some comments that we noted, were received, I think they were dated October 16th. We're pretty much in agreement that all of those are reasonable comments that we can very easily address, and there were two that I did not have the answer to immediately. One pertained to the location of the parking spaces that we had during the original approval. The parking spaces remain in their same location. We are not altering the gravel turnaround area. The parking will still be located as was originally approved in 2011. So we will have the same parking area for emergency or maintenance vehicle visits. And the other comment pertained to lighting. And just in a very quick overview, the lighting situation will be the same as it's currently at the substation. It is primarily a emergency or maintenance nighttime maintenance lighting. Usually, the lighting is not on. We do not have the lighting design on our plans, but we can provide it as a condition of approval for the final plans. And as I said before, it will be the same lighting format, if you will, as the current station. Other than that, I don't have any other comments, and do you have anything else?
At some point, as we go through our process, and you may have already given us enough information to consider whether the application's complete and accepted for jurisdiction, and then some of the further details in a public hearing will be forthcoming after that. I don't know if the information you're going to provide sort of is a little bit more into the details, or whether we pause and consider accepting the application as complete.
Either ways, but I was just going to give an update.
We'd be more than happy to wait for the board.
Okay. Let's take up the question about whether the application is complete. What's the opinion of the board, or is there some discussion or information you require in order to do that?
I've got a few technical queries in the event, Mr. Chairman, but I don't think there's anything that discourages me from making a motion to accept the plan for consideration.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Koenig. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 400 to accept the application. Okay, and now, as we get into some details, we'll have some questions for you. You've got some waivers on the table to discuss, and we've got to get a little bit of public opinion as well. So please proceed, and thank you for indulging the interruption.
No problem at all. I just wanted to actually give you a quick update on the status of the shoreline permit. Dana had mentioned that this project will require a shoreline permit, and we actually did have a pre-application meeting with DES Shoreland Group to discuss the details of what's actually shown on the presentation over there. I actually didn't even have the information about the 50 feet being able to be reduced to 25 feet, but even at the 50 feet, there were no issues, according to the staff that I had met with. And we will go ahead and submit that application early next week and anticipate it will just be a couple of weeks for approval. We're also going to be talking with the advisory committee for Merrimack River. We've actually already had a little bit of dialogue, and they're familiar with the project site just from a few years ago. I also do not anticipate that there'll be any concerns there.
I'm glad to hear that the process seems to be moving favorably for you. Last time, when we originally saw the establishment of this station, there was quite a bit of an involved process with environmental issues and certain species of birds and all of that stuff.
Yes.
Is that not coming up this time, or what's the difference between then and now that
Certainly.
Makes the world turn different?
There was, and I think it was because there was not existing substations in the location at the time. So there was some grassland area that was going to be impacted, and there was a grasshopper sparrow that was documented, yeah, for being present in that area. Since that original dialogue that was ongoing, Audubon's conducted a study and found that there are no grasshopper sparrows present. And so with that information, the reports were submitted to Fishing Game, and they accepted that. They also did identify the American kestrel and a couple of other species that could be present, and PSNH was in agreement with actually expanding the grassland in an area outside the footprint of the substation, and that was completed as part of this project. It would actually be impacted. And so before we even started with any of the permitting process, we went back and met with Fishing Game and with the interested parties in the area and basically just said, what can we do to mitigate this? And what ended up happening was there was a $72,000 payment made to the Fishing Game Nongame Fund for replacement of the lost habitat, which would have ended up being about 1,500 square feet of grassland habitat. So that's already been accepted, and the payment's been completed. And as part of the pre-application meeting with the Alteration of Terrain Group at DES has been added to the list of conditions of that permit. So the issues that were identified originally four years ago have changed over the four years, and I think have been substantially minimized compared to what they were thought to be at the beginning, especially with the grasshopper sparrow just not being present.
Okay, great. I also remember a lot of discussion about the transformers and that they had oil in them, and there was some sophisticated discussion about the structures to separate water and oil in the drainage, if anything ever happened to one of these transmission, one of these transformers and all of that. Is that all still present on the site and part of this plan and discussion, or was that the other station that was before us at the same time as this one last time?
Do you?
My understanding is it was with the other station, if I'm not correct.
Is the other one called Thornton or something?
The Thornton Distribution Substation, which is on a different property.
That's the one that's got the oil in the oil separators and all of that stuff, so that's not an issue on the site?
No, the transformers, and I'm not going to get too far into the weeds here, but I'm going to let you answer the question.
Yeah, Thornton Substation, the one that's there now, that serves the distribution load, does have the transformers and the oil.
Okay.
Okay, this one will have one auto transformer, though, and it will have the same type of oil containment system, and we have, Joe Sperry's a civil engineer, that he can speak to the design of all that, too.
Okay.
But it's a very similar design.
So it'll be a transformer in sort of the expanded area, and there's some oil separation system on the plans that we have before?
Oil containment.
Oil containment.
Yeah.
Where is that in the plans that we have, the oil containment system? Or is it in the plans that you provided to us?
So it's not in the site?
The secondary containment.
Yeah. Is that something that you can provide to the staff that we can have a look at? And when you say it's the same as the one that's in the Thornton?
Well, it's bigger. It has a larger capacity. Their size, based on the FERC regulations for that, SPCC plans, right, and they require 110% capacity. So based on the auto transformer design, which we just placed the order for it, so I don't have the design drawings, we can show you sister units that will be the same type of design with similar capacity. So until I get the design drawings, Joe really can't do the drawing at this time, but it will be that system. That's the one we use as a standard.
Okay. Can you show, based on what you've given us for drawings, at least where that will be?
Sure.
And on the plans, it's just going to look like a rectangle to us, but.
When we do these, we actually, this is what's called the ultimate design. Right now, we're only, these are the auto transformers. So we're only putting one of those two in, and I haven't decided which one yet, because they're going to be equally the same. We have no plans yet, and we look out at a 20-year planning horizon to put the second one in. Right now, we're only putting one in. And so it'll be one of these two right here. That's where the transformers go.
As far as our approval goes, we're approving a site for two, so that you don't have to come back when you decide to do the second one?
I believe that's what, yeah, that's why, because we do the expansion.
Yeah.
And so you can see, because of the line coming in, it comes in and goes out this way. It's just the symmetry here. I won't build, you know, if I don't put this one in, I won't actually build that much.
Okay.
So this is just to connect the transformer and make it operate from the high side to the low side.
Okay. Is there any objection to adding a note to the plan that you'll use the oil separating or oil containment technology on those, when you add those transformers?
Oh, gosh, no. No, we would do that anyways.
Okay.
No, there's no, no, no problems at all. I don't know, do you, I think, I think my associate has similar plans. He came equipped to show you what that system would look like, if you'd like to see it either now or later. He's certainly available.
At whatever time in your presentation you think to do it.
Oh, do you want to show him, Joe?
Joe Sperry with PSNH. Trying to get this in a format that you guys can easily read it, because it's taken from another substation project. Couple of detailed sheets.
Are these copies or duplicates?
These are all part of the same plan set.
So show me what I should look at, and we'll pass it around.
Basically, this is the auto transformer at another facility right now. This rectangular outline is the oil containment system as it exists today. Basically, it's a rubber bladder that's placed around the transformer sized to hold 110% of the oil in the transformer. It's sloped to drain to a, basically, a standard sump drain, in that we replace an in-vibrant bead system, which is shown on this set. And the in-vibrant bead system is set up so that as soon as oil touches it, the beads expand and eliminate the possibility of water from exiting.
That is a little bit different than the design from us, and Tom, you want to say?
So there's the foundation that the transformer sits on. And so if they're, in unfortunate event, there is a release, drains down onto the bladder here, and when it goes into here, this is where the in-vibrant bead system is, and they just, they swallow right away and stop the flow.
Okay.
So rainwater passes through, because this is all.
Permeable.
Well, it's two to three-inch round washed stone. It goes through there, so it varies particularly because of the in-vibrant bead system. It's like a polymer membrane. It's an oil-resistant membrane. And when they're going to hit these beads, they're petrochemical ignited, and they just close right up. It's stopped, so it contains all the oil in it.
Okay. And there's something that tells you guys that oil's been spilled, and you guys come out and fix it all up?
Yeah. We get alarms on the transformers, the oil levels.
Okay. Great, I understand. Thank you for going through that, and I apologize for the informality with that. You can grab all these back.
They'll be detailed, unique to the site.
Okay. So when we get to ultimately having a plan signed, all those details will be worked out in the plan set. We'll have those. Okay. Is there anything more that you want to tell us as a part of your general presentation before we get to waivers and questions and those things? Or more questions?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now, you've asked for a bunch of waivers, which seem perfectly reasonable based on the nature of the project and its location, for the road plan profile, street design, length of cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets, landscaped area between the site and adjacent parcels, and sidewalks. Can you speak to those waiver requests a little bit?
Sure. Essentially, the road plan and profile, we are not changing the existing road that runs into the site. A road plan and profile was presented during the original approval process. Street design, a similar justification. We're not changing, we're not creating a street, per se. We're creating or using an existing, utilizing existing gravel drive. The dead-end cul-de-sac, again, we're extending the Star Drive cul-de-sac for the purposes solely of this driveway, which is, again, solely for the use of public service at the gated railroad crossing. And again, sidewalks, we don't, we don't want pedestrians out there, so we're not going to provide any means for them to get around. And then lastly, the landscaped area between the site and all adjacent parcels, again, we are doing some tree clearing around the perimeter of the site, but we are leaving a buffer, a fairly thick buffer, particularly on the northerly side, as well as along the river and the westerly side.
Dimensionally, how thick is that wooded area to the north?
That would be approximately 75 feet.
Okay. And it's all whatever's natural growth?
It's thick at end, as well as some natural wood.
Okay. Sounds good. Members of the board have questions for the applicant before we have a public hearing?
I have a couple, if I may.
Please.
Did you see the note from the Conservation Commission regarding the fertilizers to be used on the grasslands?
Yes, sir, we did, and we are going to make the appropriate changes to the notes on our plans. We are going to eliminate all references to hay, and we're going to modify the fertilizer requirements to be based on actual soil testing to find out if anything's necessary, and if they are, there'll be low phosphate or no phosphate fertilizers.
And slow release, whatever the other word is.
Yeah.
Slow release and all that. You've got to do the soils.
We're okay with the conditions they set forth.
Exactly, as specific. The other question is, I sort of picked up right at the very beginning, are you running higher voltages onto this site than you have in the past, or is it the same high voltage? I sort of got the impression that you were part of something, the ISO chain, which is or something, and I just would like that explained to me.
Yeah, sure. Good question. There's a line there today. You see the structures that are there. There's a real tall one.
Yeah.
We're cutting that one. And so that one will cut and come down in, and that's what the area in gray over there is going to land on, so it energizes the high side of the transformer.
So at present, if you like, the voltage at the ground, on the ground, if I use those terms.
Yep, that's a good term.
Is going to be higher than it's been up to now, because you've broken that line, brought it through the new unit.
That's correct. There'll be equipment on the ground that's operating at a higher voltage than it does today.
Thank you. That's the question I just wanted to know.
Yeah, yeah, no.
What's the voltage that you'll have maximum?
345,000, and that's phase-to-phase, right? So line to ground, it's about 200,000.
Yeah, so.
Out there today, as point of reference, it's 115,000 phase-to-phase, or 66,400 phase-to-ground thousand, 64,000 volts.
It'll still kill you, whatever it is.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, no. Even the outlet will do that.
That was meant as a flip.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, thank you. Substantial voltage. Nelson's question. Nelson?
Oh, okay. I just had a few more questions about the site plan. Our plan doesn't show the area of gravel that you're putting in here, and I wanted to know the extent of the gravel cover that you're proposing. This is the washed gravel, I presume?
There's a typical section on the last sheet of the plans. It is nearly identical to the original approval.
Yeah.
I don't have it memorized. I apologize. Yeah, the section will include a base of, once you have a stable subgrade, we'll have 12 inches of banked burned gravel. On top of that, six inches of crushed stone, and on top of that, four inches of three-quarter inch crush rock. That is shown on sheet 10 of 10 in the lower right corner.
Lower right, typical subs.
It's a little tough to see at this scale.
Substation section, yes. What I was asking was the gravel coverage on the site itself. Does it go all the way fence to fence, or?
Yes.
Okay, that was, that was the question. And then, what kind of, I presume this is done to keep any growth out there?
Yes.
And what else is done?
Yeah, it's, good question.
It's actually part of the safety of the ground grid. The last four inches are a select crushed stone, and they have a specific resistance value, so in the unlikely event something comes to ground there, we have a mesh grid under there, so you're like the bird on the wire, so you won't, nothing will pass through you if you're standing on that crushed stone. It actually. It actually extends three feet beyond the fence because the ground grid also extends beyond the fence three feet. In case somebody were to walk by, touch the fence and something happened, they wouldn't be injured either. So it's all engineered product. That's why it's select fill brought in and brought up within the fenced area and then three feet outside the fence.
Three feet beyond.
And beyond the three feet, I see loam and seed, four inches of loam and seed.
Yeah, it can be.
After that, in that slope, it's just grass?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Nelson, go ahead.
Okay, I just didn't see it on the, on the plot plan, on the site plan as to where the gravel was, and I don't think it's on here.
It's that light gray area that's shaded on that plan there and...
I gotta see this plan, I can't, can't make that one out. Good.
Well, we can, we can clarify that, that's easy. We'll be sure to clarify the area that will be, I'll label it as the area to be treated in accordance with the typical section shown on sheet 10.
With the gravel and because it looks like in one place it might interfere with your swale, it looks like it goes into the swale. But I don't know what three feet looks like on this bitty plan anyway, so.
Well, again, the typical section on sheet 10 actually shows it extending five feet beyond the fence line.
Okay.
Okay, so even if it doesn't show graphically as clearly as it should, the construction detail would be to extend it five feet beyond, beyond the fence line.
But it's part of the plan we're approving.
You can say that.
I think we'd like to see it on this plan.
I'll be sure, I'll put some line work on there to clarify that.
The other, the secondary question on this was the treatment of that over time. Whether that's, has to be treated to prevent growth of plants and grasses and things? And if so, what is the procedure, the protocol on that?
Because we do do maintenance on them, but I'd have to get back to you on the exact treatment. I mean, usually we don't have problems with growth in the substations.
No?
No, I mean, I don't, I think...
You've got a long way to come through.
It's certainly got a lot of gravel and stone to get through, but the only question is, are you, are you using any herbicides or anything?
Herbicide pesticides, I don't believe so, but I can certainly, we have maintenance protocols and all that stuff, so I'm sure I can get it to Hut, who can get it to the board.
That was the question really, is what's going in there? Are there any materials that are used like that?
Sure.
The other thing I would like to ask about is the, last time we reviewed this substation, there was a considerable debate about screening this site from an adjacent site. In the words, some trees planted to accommodate that, to accomplish that. And I think they're shown on the plan now, is that, we haven't intruded in any way onto that proposed visual screen?
No, that is not changing at all. The plant, the trees that were planted are still there and they will remain there.
Yeah, okay.
We were careful to avoid any disturbance of that visual screen.
So hopefully you're at peace with your neighbors on that.
Hopefully.
Okay, the tree clearing came as a bit of a surprise to me. You mentioned you had proposed this to the LAC, that you'd gone to the LAC with it and I don't think...
Yes, we actually, what I had said was that we had, we talked with them and they, we have not provided the updated plan, but they're aware that there's going to be some tree cutting.
When you say them, did you go to one of their meetings?
No, I have not been there yet. I went first to Shoreland and got their input, and then the next step was to go to LAC, and I haven't been there yet. But we've talked on the phone, I contacted Michelle and made her aware of the project and we'll be sending plans their way for review as part of the submittal for...
Excuse me, Michelle?
Is it Bochelain? I don't remember her last name, LAC. I'd spoken with her.
This is at DES or at...
No, that's at LAC, the contact I spoke with at LAC.
Michelle Tremblay?
Oh, Tremblay, yes, thank you, not Bochelain.
Michelle Tremblay is chairman of the Upper Merrimack River LAC, not the Lower Merrimack River LAC.
That wouldn't work then.
That's why...
We had, and we had talked about the specific site plan, but maybe that is, that certainly would be a problem. So the lower advisory committee will be contacted and they will receive a copy, absolutely, of the shoreline permit as part of that process. And that submittal's happening next week, and that's what I was indicating earlier, was that we had planned on communicating with them and that they would get a copy.
Okay.
Thank you. And I will definitely follow up with Michelle also to find out why neither one of us realized that that wasn't in their purview.
Gene Porter is the person you want to talk to from the Lower Merrimack River. You might make note of that.
I did, thank you.
Okay, the one other thing I noticed is, this thing in here says 70% submission on all of these things that we've got. What does that mean?
That was a labeling that we put on the plans pursuant to our contract with Public Service of New Hampshire. 100% documents would be the construction drawings subsequent to permitting.
So it means nothing for us?
Nothing for you.
Okay.
And we'd be happy, we are going to need to remove that anyway for any filing of the site plans because it doesn't meet the registry requirements.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I think that's, that's all I have for immediate questions.
Any other members of the board have any questions? Let's let you guys stand up a little bit to leave that table in case any butters want to weigh in. I don't know that there are, but give us a second. Are there any butters or citizens who wish to weigh in and offer the board any opinions before the board considers taking any final action on this? Going once, going twice? Okay, close the public hearing, you're certainly welcome to come back. What's the board's will, sorry for chasing you away that quickly. What's the board's intentions with respect to their request for waivers? There are five individual waivers, although I don't, I think that they probably could be addressed collectively if that's the will of...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant all the waivers because effectively they've had the waivers with the previous version of what they did at that substation. And I would make a motion that we grant all the waivers that listed because the specific circumstances, the site plan, the conditions of the land and the existing substation already indicate the waiver will properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Disco. Any discussion on the waivers? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm an aye, I'm an aye on that.
400, but you wanted to comment, I guess?
I just wanted to comment to Gillian, please. The section 406 et cetera, everything from 404 is missing from my new, my brand new zoning ordinance and building code.
There it looks in mine.
Yeah, if you go to section four... Maybe it's just my copy, I don't know. Oh, I'm not looking at the subdivision regulations, I'm looking at the zoning ordinance, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go there. It's all right, they're there, Nelson.
Sorry about that.
In the other book, okay.
Okay.
All right, so we're all set with those. What's the will of the board with respect to the application in chief?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we grant the application for this development at the Eagle Substation, subject to the waivers we've talked about, subject to the memo from Gillian Harris dated October the 16th, 2014, together with the evidence we've heard from the gentleman here, gentleman and lady here this evening.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second it, but I'd like to be more specific about some of the things we asked for this evening and make sure they're in there.
Recognize a second from Mr. Disco and hear the discussion, see if we can't...
Okay, one of them was the provide, he was going to provide lighting, a lighting diagram of the, of the site. And that's...
Did we discuss lighting tonight or?
They did discuss it.
That is contained in Gillian's recommendations that we provide a light plan or ask for a waiver.
Oh, okay. Okay, it's in there.
Okay.
And I was just looking at things I picked up as we talked. The other was to provide more detail on the oil containment system.
We're agreeable to that, yes.
And is that in Gillian's or that's an add-on?
That would be an add-on, as we discussed here tonight, as well as the delineation of the gravelled area and to provide the board with information about any plant control measures you have to take.
Which is why I put in the business about the evidence that we've had here to drag cover.
I know, I know. Yeah, it's better to spell them out, thank you.
Yep, it's fine, Nelson.
And I think they should show us the final tree clearing, whatever it is
Yes.
on the plan, that's not yet settled.
Have that reflected on plan. Does all of those comments reflect both the intention of the maker and the second of the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're clear on that. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? 400 for final approval.
Thank you very much.
Take your time.
Thank you for the presentation. Item number five on our agenda is Jesse Frazier as the applicant and owner, Bluebird Enterprises, pre-submission hearing to discuss a home occupation and site plan for a storage trailer as a commercial use in the R Residential and Aquifer Conservation Districts located at 144 Wire Road and the adjacent unnumbered parcel, tax map 7C, lot 19 and 20. Gillian, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
The applicant received a variance recently for a commercial use in the residential district on one of the lots that he owns. So he's here to discuss the site plan and what the board wishes to see on there, as well as the need for a possible home occupation permit for the other lot, the adjacent lot where his residence is. And I'll let you...
Is the zoning board's variance that's been granted to allow a general commercial use or a specific commercial use?
It is to allow a personal service business, let me just find it. Personal service business, critter control and the R Residential.
Okay, and so if the applicant, following our approval, changes that commercial use to something else, that variance doesn't give him the authority to do that?
Right.
Okay, good, thank you. Please introduce yourself, sign in and tell us about...
Evening, folks. Jesse Frazier, owner of 144 Wire Road, which is lot 20. That's our primarily home, home residence. I'm also the president of Bluebird Enterprises, which is a, which is the parent company for a critter control of New Hampshire, which is ownership of lot 19, which is our side lot, which is about 140 to 142 Wire Road. Lot 20 is our home office that we're going for, it's a six by 11 room, which is 66 square feet. That's where my wife does all the billing and clerical things like that. Lot 19, we're going for hopeful acceptance of an existing storage trailer, which does lie within the R1 residential and the Aquifer protection areas. The zoning's already been changed per Gillian, and everything lies beyond the required front and side setbacks.
What's the dimensions of your storage trailer and what do you store in it?
It is 10 by 40, it is general construction items. Critter control is a service business, we're a humane wildlife control firm. We don't use pesticides or rodenticides, which came up at our last meeting. Somebody thought we had gallons of product everywhere, we don't use any kind of pesticide. So it's primarily a construction thing, screws, caulking, adhesives, tools, 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 tools.
Make the connection for me between construction business and the critter control business because I don't necessarily, it doesn't jump out at me intuitively.
You have squirrels in your attic. We humanely get the squirrels out and then we do all the repair, siding, roofing, painting, that sort of thing. The actual hands-on animal aspect is about 10% of our revenue, the other 90% is the repairs. So think of us as a general contractor that then does a little bit of squirrel work and raccoons and things like that.
Understood. Is there any keeping of the critters on site?
Nope, we primarily either live trap and relocate where we do a process called an eviction, where we install a valve on the person's home, squirrel basically goes out but not back in. So we usually don't trap anything, we try not to at least. We try to leave the animals in their home environment, just not inside someone's home.
Okay, so you're never catching animals and relocating them or?
We don't relocate anything to our property there. We are fortunate, we have about 180 lands where we're legally allowed to let animals go. Majority are privately held lands where we have legal right to relocate animals to. None of which are let go on our property, either lot 19 or 20.
When you say you're legally entitled to, does that mean that you've got the permission of the owner or some state statute that blesses what you do?
There's no state statute, per New Hampshire law, somebody in my business has to either, once we live trap an animal, you have to euthanize it or you can relocate it with written landowner permission of that landowner. Two of our sites are state owned lands, the other 170 some odd sites are privately held lands. Friends and friends and friends and realtors with 30 acres here, 40 acres there.
When you relocate those animals to any of those sites, do you have to do anything to check the health of the animal or?
A visual check just to make sure that the animal isn't exhibiting any kind of signs of rabies or distemper or, or anything else. We are also a license of our life rehabilitator as well, so injuries that might have arisen before that, we also do rehab to animals and then we will, and then we will let them go afterwards.
Where do you do that rehab?
That is typically done at our house.
Okay, so that's the lot 20?
Yep.
Is there any special facilities for that, to make that work?
There is not, no, and we are licensed through, through New Hampshire Fish and Game.
If the board is, when we get to the point of past a pre-submission hearing and looking at some finals, if one of the conditions the board requires is to have you submit a copy of that license to the department?
No problem.
No problem? Okay. Other?
You've sort of gently touched on the word squirrel, and I'm trying to understand, is that all we're talking about? I mean, or if somebody turns up and says he's got a black bear in their backyard, are you going to do?
We do anything raccoon sized and smaller, so New Hampshire Fish and Game takes care of a deer bear and moose.
Okay, so you're really only talking about fairly small animals that we could pick up by hands if we really were foolish enough to do it?
If you so chose to, yeah.
That's why you call it a critter. I mean, I call a bear, man, right?
We're whatever, the bat guy, the squirrel guy, the mouse guy, whatever problem they're having, it's usually guy on the end of.
So bats were something you'd remove from my attic if I had bats?
Everything, exactly.
Snakes?
Yes.
Anything like that?
So the stor, and the storage trailer really isn't a storage trailer, it's really, yeah, it was a trailer once upon a long time ago, but it's basically a static storage place.
Right, it's a...
You're never going to tow it offsite or anything like that?
No, it does have axles, it's sitting on blocks. It's what you would see at like a construction site, it's a construction and storage trailer.
Yeah, okay, but they do actually move them, yours is going to be permanent there.
It can be moved, it does have wheels and axles under. It was actually at our Portsmouth facility before we consolidated everything.
It's not your intention to move it anywhere?
It's not my intention, no.
Okay, but there's nothing storage wise going on there other than construction and tools and...
Tools and, yeah.
Supplies. What kind of parking of trucks and vehicles go on on the site?
We have three company vehicles that you can get parked there, that's it.
What are the company vehicles, trucks?
Trucks, yeah. And I have two trailers. I've got a six by 12 storage trailer and I've got a 20 foot flatbed.
All that stuff is going to be kept on 19 or 20?
19.
Okay, what gets stored on 20, if anything?
Nothing.
It's just a little bit different approach between 19, which has been granted permission to be a commercial site, and 20, which is you're looking for a home occupation on?
Right, basically, we're going for the issue on, the issue on 20 is the home office.
Yeah.
Which is a regular office, but then two hours a week, my wife does all the billing, so then it's considered a home office.
And standing by itself, what you've described for the home office is not going to upset, I don't think we'd have any trouble with that. It's sort of understanding the rest of the business that you have going on there.
The only issue that they said was, what was it, I think they cited comfort level with the, with the things on the outside showing of a home occupation, which primarily was the, was the dumpsters.
When you say they, who are, who's they?
Community, community, community development when we started all of this.
So the department or the zoning board?
The department.
Okay, so the department says nothing visually outside the home occupation?
Well, that's what started everything because they saw, because they saw the dumpsters. Everything's been there. We bought our house in '08, we started running our critter control out of there at that point. And then we bought lot 19, 2011, and moved everything there 2012. So it's been there for a while, so it's not like this is a...
Are there dumpsters on 19 or 20?
20, they're at my home.
So you intend to keep the dumpsters at 20 or you want those to be part of the commercial on 19?
Yeah, keep, intend to keep them at 20.
Where are they on the site for 20?
They are to the left of the garage against the fence. And I would have those regardless of, if I had a business there. I have a single stream of recycling as well as a trash, it's the greatest thing ever.
So were you talking about trash cans or?
Dumpsters, just a six yard dumpster.
A commercial dumpster, not a, not something you would normally find at a residence?
Well, I mean, I see them at residences as well, but...
Six yard?
Yeah, I see big, I see big 10 yarders at folks' houses too. I see big, I see big ten-yarders at folks' houses, too. But that's the smallest that we could actually get, so...
I don't know that we could address whether a residence uses a dumpster or not if they chose to. I don't think that, I've seen it, but I don't think that we could address it.
I've seen it at lots of folks' houses.
But when you come forward with a home occupation, that changes our analysis a little bit, and we actually can tell you whether that would be part of something we would allow.
I can't actually move them, because the vehicle can't actually make the corner to get into the side lot because of the size of the vehicle.
You can't move them to where?
I can't move them to lot nineteen. The access is through our property, and a vehicle of that size cannot make the corner around the trees to get in.
When it comes time for a formal submission and review, that certainly would be a discussion that we'd wanna have a little bit further in details.
Okay.
I'd need to, between now and then, take a look at some of our regulations a little bit. As I understand, home occupations, that sort of an external visual representation of a home occupation would not have been something we typically allowed people to do.
Right, I see.
And since you're coming before us to look for it, it gives us a chance to weigh in on that.
Yeah.
Now...
If you do look in it, the majority of my stuff is, we didn't really throw away a lot through a critter control.
It's just household trash?
Most of it is household trash.
How many people live there?
We have two people there, and then all the rehab items.
So rehab items is the stuff from the business?
Right.
Okay.
The majority of things are actually recycled. Like, when you open it up, the recycling is usually full, the trash is usually a third full.
Okay, so it's, the dumpsters are really a function of the business, they're not a function of the residence?
They're both. Of what's in the dumpsters, probably half of it is household, the other half is of a business.
Okay. Whenever there's dumpsters, the time for when they're picked up and how frequently and all that stuff?
They're picked up every month. We're on a thirty-day-a-monthly, they're picked up every Wednesday and Friday.
Okay, well, I guess I'd need ten yards, too, if I only did it once a month.
Right, exactly. I was about to say, think of how many times you go to the dump every Saturday, and how many trash barrels or bags that is.
Understood. Other folks on the board who have questions or thoughts about the discussion that we're having with the applicant?
Well, I'd like to know a little more about what you're doing on lot twenty, that's the, or...
Twenty is where the house is, nineteen is the commercial.
Not lot nineteen.
Okay.
You said the only thing on there is this trailer?
I've got my storage trailer, I've got a fence which is in front of it, I've got some ladders that are hanging on the fence, and I have parking. That's the only thing that's over there.
I drove, happened to drive by it the other day in anticipation of this meeting, and I thought what I, what I saw, I thought what I saw in the back behind the trailer was construction equipment of some kinds.
I have a lift, which is on the, which is on the twenty-foot flatbed, and I have vehicles, that's it.
Vehicles?
Vehicles.
What sort of vehicles, I guess?
I've got three trucks.
Three trucks, and this lift, can you describe the lift to me?
It is a construction lift, so that you can access over fifty-five feet, a articulating boom lift.
With a person on it?
Yep.
Like a bucket?
Insurance picker, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So there's other equipment besides the trailer being stored on this?
I've got the trailer, I've got the flatbed, on the flatbed is the lift, and then I have three trucks.
Yeah. Okay, I didn't quite get that from the application originally. I guess that's all I have for questions right now, Mr. Chairman.
Let me offer a few. When it comes time to a formal submission, how this gets, I know that one of the questions you're looking for is whether we're looking for sort of a fully engineered site plan, and I don't know that the board would necessarily require that level of detail of engineering, but...
That's cool.
Questions of screening are certainly important. Are you willing to, or would you, if the board requires it?
Screening as far as obscuring things?
Yes, making it visually...
There is a fence in front of the storage trailer now, there's a, there's a six-foot stockade fence, which is about sixty feet long, in front of the storage trailer.
Apparently, I know what you're describing, but when Nelson went by, he had no trouble seeing what was going on on there.
The leaves are falling off the tree, so it's green, and so you've got a pretty open visual there. And you could plant some more in front of that fence.
Our plan, we're actually, we're actually renting a loader over the weekend to spread some more stuff, and actually move some of the trees in front of there. That lot was cleared prior to us buying it. If it wasn't cleared how it is now, we would've done less clearing and left everything obscured across the front. But we will be, I think we've got fourteen trees that we're planting in the open space in front view.
Fourteen-inch trees?
Fourteen trees total.
Oh, fourteen trees?
Yeah.
How big?
We've got some eighteen-foot oaks and some, and we've got some hemlocks and things like that, that we're gonna be kind of putting in front.
Okay. I'd like, I don't know how the board feels, I'd like to see a screen there that does screen it, you know? And so we'll be looking for something like that, if you come back with a site plan.
Are you looking for something more hemlocky, or?
Not necessarily species-specific, but yes, evergreen and low to the ground. So from the road, if I'm looking at it, I see green and not your trailer and your boom lift.
But low to the ground...
Which is usually not able to be seen, we just had that moved out of the way for other stuff, but usually that's parked on the other side of the trailer, so you can't see any kind of lifts or anything, so...
Understanding that equipment gets parked a little bit shifting around, but one of the things that you would show us is, where do you generally intend to have these things located, so that they're parked and not out front? And some of the reason for that is, you know, I don't know what your trucks look like, but if you've got your company name painted on the side of it, you park it up by the road and it becomes a sign.
Right.
Well, no, it's not the way we wanna do it, see that.
Even if I park it in front of my house, it becomes a sign, so I mean, you can look at it a thousand ways.
You don't have any signage on either site right now, or intend to have any signage on either site?
I don't intend to now. We're primarily a service-based business, we don't have anybody that comes to our house, I mean, there's no need to. Majority of our advertising is online and Yellow Pages, so...
Do you maintain any of your vehicles, change your oil, do anything like that on site?
Not at this point, I mean, everything's so computer-controlled and everything else, but we don't do any maintenance.
Okay. That would certainly be an important condition, especially since you've got gravel and no pavement, nothing to stop a oil change from running all over the ground.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions from anyone?
One of the other questions that the staff put to us, whether we're gonna want a formal planning board approval for home occupation, and my view is we should have one.
I think that we should have one, so that you're comfortable, because if we give you an approval, you're comfortable with the authority that you have. I don't think that what you've proposed for your own site with the six by ten means a whole lot in terms of the approval.
Right.
It's not a very difficult approval to get. The dumpster question, somehow we'll untangle that one, figure that out, whether we try to find a way to move it onto the other site, so that all the commercial is on the commercial site.
Unfortunately, I can't, because of the way that the driveway is set up and how it goes through, that vehicle cannot make the turn without me cutting out lots and lots of trees.
Have to take a look at it and see what's going on with it, and if...
If you guys wanna pop over and see that, I mean, that's an easy thing.
How, are the dumpsters visible from the street now, or are they screened by something?
They're visible from the street. The vehicle has to be able to pull in and access it straight.
Yeah. Understood. I would have a hard time looking at a home occupation that had dumpsters visible from it. Screen them or move them or something.
Screen them, fence them, or something, Mr. Chairman.
How do you mean fence them? Put like a fence around it, and then when they come, they just have to open them?
Yeah, something so I don't see, you know, big green dumpster.
Okay.
From the street. Is there other issues that you wanna hear from us, an opinion or thoughts, as a part of your pre-submission hearing?
Tell me what I need to do, and we'll do it and get approval, and like I said, this has been here for a while, it took a long time before.
Sure, understood.
I wasn't aware that we had to go through any kind of approval to have some vehicles parked there and stuff, so...
Yeah, when you run a business off of a residential site, you need approval for a home occupation, and if it's a business on a business site, you need a site plan approval. And the staff will work with you on that, based on the comments and discussion that we've had here.
They've been really cool so far, so...
I think that you're gonna want to come forward with an application for the home occupation, not a very complicated process, couple of pages.
Yep.
As far as the site plan, I haven't really taken the sense of anybody else on the board. I don't think that a fully engineered site plan is necessary, but I do wanna see someone put a pencil to paper and say the trucks are gonna go here, and the trailer goes here, and we'll put some trees here, and that sort of thing. Is that acceptable to everyone else?
I'd be agreeable to that, Mr. Chairman. I think the attempt he's made is good as far as it goes, but it should go further. As we pointed out, there's some things that we wanna see on this plan, one of them being the dumpster and another being some more screening. So I think this approach is satisfactory to me, to take this plan and market the way he wants to change it.
Yeah.
For this purpose.
I go along with it, Mr. Chairman. I don't think we want a full-engineered site plans, really, because...
Mr. Frazier, before you leave us, let's give the butters and interested citizens an opportunity to weigh in, if there are any here.
Sure.
Are there any butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Please, one at a time, come forward, grab a seat at the table, introduce yourself, and tell us what's on your mind.
My name is David McDonald. I live on Bryant Circle, and our property abuts Jesse's. There's a little bit of concern that I have, is that, when I first got this notice, I thought it was for the site plan to put the trailer and the vehicles and all that stuff on the site. I didn't realize that that stuff has already been approved, and was kinda curious how a commercial application like this got placed into a residential neighborhood.
Sure. The zoning board is, apparently had a hearing on this site. I didn't certainly see any of that paperwork as a result of that, because it wouldn't come to planning board, but I would assume that Mr. Frazier has applied for a variance to the zoning board, and they've granted one which allows a commercial use on the separate lot that has the trailer on it.
Okay.
So that's something that, through the zoning board, there would've been a butter notification to the parties that are abutting that site, and I can see on this map that you're not gonna be one of them, because your property doesn't contact that commercial site.
Nineteen, it contacts twenty.
Right.
Okay. You know, my comment is, is that this looks like something that should be up on Columbia Circle, not Bryant Circle. It really does look like a commercial organization, there's some heavy equipment, heavy trucks, it's all visible from the road, and this is a neighborhood with, you know, there's little kids around. So it just doesn't seem properly zoned for this kind of thing.
It isn't properly zoned, but that's what the variance is all about. He's gotten relief from the zoning board that allows the use. What we can do now is control the site plan of that use, is say, put some trees, park the trucks here, do it this way or that way, but we don't have a decision-making power over the ability to do the commercial use on this site. The zoning board's granted that relief.
So you guys just go granting commercial use in residential areas?
We don't, that's the zoning board.
You guys, yeah.
Okay.
You got the wrong guys.
Well, why isn't the zoning board here, then? I mean, why weren't, it just seems insane.
Well, they were, on their night, when this application came before them, they were here, and they considered it and debated it and heard testimony and voted on it.
I've owned similar businesses where we have trucks and whatnot, and have always, you know, taken it away from the house, not brought it close by, and it's not, it's just not a pretty thing in our neighborhood, and I think it does need to, if it has to be this, it definitely needs to be prettied up a little bit.
I certainly understand your testimony, and out of respect for the zoning board, as I would on any application, it's not my place to weigh in on what I would do if I were a sitting member of the zoning board, hearing the application. I can't.
Okay.
I wouldn't do that any more than I do that to the town council or the state senate. It's not my role to weigh in on their issues.
Okay, well, that being the case, and I ask that you guys at least put a good deal of emphasis on making this as invisible as possible for the neighbors.
Understood. Understood. Is there anything else that you'd like to add for that?
That's it.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Do you need me to sign this here?
Yes, please. That way, if I can get the name spelled right.
If we can read it, make sure we can read it.
David McDonald's not too tough.
You live at two Bryant Circle?
Six.
Six Bryant Circle. Oh, okay, right, I got, even further around the corner.
That's the one.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other butters or citizens wish to weigh in? Please come forward, introduce yourself and sign in.
Good evening, I'm Keith Barrigan at four Bryant Circle. I have the same, you know, concerns as David just had.
Keith, I didn't catch your last name.
Barrigan.
Barrigan, thank you.
And so, yeah, like, my, my whole problem was the same thing with, it is an eyesore. You know, he says he doesn't do maintenance to his vehicles. I've seen him in his driveway doing maintenance in his vehicles. I don't know, a month or so ago, a truck caught on fire. You know, it is just not pleasant to see.
When you say you've seen him doing maintenance on his vehicles, what have you seen him, and where do you see it from?
The street, does it in his driveway.
So when you're driving down the street?
Driving down, or, driving down to go to Bryant Circle, you know, I've seen him. He had a left axle out of the truck that caught on fire, and...
So a left axle caught on fire?
Oh, no, 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 he was working on the left side of the truck. He had like the knuckle and the hub out, and then a couple days later, the truck is behind his fence on fire.
Okay. Anything else that you'd like to add?
No.
The board to consider? Let me offer a little bit of feedback on that. To the extent this board considers this and puts a restriction on him that says, "No vehicle maintenance," which would be a note on the plan and part of a condition of approval, then he's obligated to abide by that condition of approval, and you see violations of it, you call Gillian's office, Tim, anybody whoever's over there, and...
Yeah. And the same thing in the dumpsters?
I can guarantee you a wicked fast response.
No, 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 that's fine, but like, you know, the dumpsters could be moved, you just have to make a new driveway. You know, he says he can't do it, just move some of the rocks, move a fence, and he could drive by there. He chooses to go through his house.
No, I understand that, and we see that from applications all the time, and basically, what engineers will tell us is anything can be done, it's just a matter of whether it's feasible and, you know, within the, within limits of what we've got going on, but Keith, thank you for the testimony.
No, thank you.
Anyone else wish to weigh in? Please come on forward.
Good evening. My name's Gary Waters. I'm also...I live at three Bryant Circle. I fully endorse small business and Mr. Frazier and his small business. My concern really is, is again, the presentation of the business. The zoning is already done, like you said. As Ben said, it's a bit of an eyesore. He's done a great job with the house. Actually, in the beginning of the house, when they purchased the house, it was kind of distressed. They've done a great job with that. I'd like to see them do that with the business, if they're gonna put a business there. I'm not crazy about having a commercial business in a residential area, and I want to put that out there. I know that's not up to you. But what's up to you is how it's presented. And I don't know what you can do as far as how that's presented, but he's already doing that. He's already presenting it. So he's already done it. He's put the cart in front of the horse. And I ask you to consider that when you decide how you're going to approve this presentation. That he's already done it, okay? He's already got a trailer there. He's already got this fence, which is basically just...it's a cheap barricade in the front. And I'm sorry, Mr. Frazier, but that's what it is. It's just it's cheap. And it doesn't look very good, and that's probably why it's been brought to you. As you've heard already, there's a dumpster there at the side of the house. You know, there's two people that live in my house, too. I don't need a dumpster, okay? I sort my recyclables as well. I have a pink trash can that we put our recyclables in, okay? We don't have a big dumpster in front of our house. There's no need for it. And I wonder about that. I wonder what goes into that dumpster. We talk about critters and whatnot. He says he doesn't euthanize them or whatever, but what goes in there? Construction materials. Why do you need a large trailer for construction materials? That's not really your concern. That's probably zoning. But at the same time, it comes down to the presentation of that, right? So we have to live with it. We have to drive by it every day. He has to live with it, too. He and his wife have to live with it, right? So how do they present it? How do they dress it up? And how do we...how do we wrap that? And what does that do to our property values? What does that do to our drive home? What does that do to our life experience? And that's what we're addressing here, right? So that's what I ask you to do, is you to consider and understand that he hasn't...he didn't...he didn't come to you and say, "Hey, this is what I want to do, and what's okay with you." He came to you and said, "Well, I have to do this now." So you're the oversight, and I ask you to be stringent about what your decisions are and make sure that there is proper oversight on this because he hasn't done it. He did it with his house, because that's where he lives. But that property next door is an afterthought. It's like, "Well, that's where my business is." And as far as, you know, the maintenance of the vehicles, yeah. I've seen the truck out there up on the jack with the wheel off it, and I don't know about the fire. I didn't see it. But, you know, I wasn't there at that time. I was at work or whatever, right? But I've seen him working on the stuff. And we all work on our vehicles at home if that's what we do. And good on him that he can do that. But if it's commercial and if it's his business and it's what he does, then consider how that is presented to the people that drive by and people that live there. And that's all I ask for, is that consideration, the consideration of the neighbors. You got a business, make a living. That's great. Do it. But consider the people that live around you and what impact that has on them. And that's what we're all about here, right? We're about community. So the communities...we're sitting here as a community and saying, "Hey, this is what we want." Yeah, you did a great job with your house. That's awesome. You know, they've done a great job. They, you know, recided, they painted it, landscaping. It's fantastic. Do that with your business. Take the pride in business. You want to move the dumpster. They want you to move the dumpster? Well, put a driveway, because they have this flat fence. Put a driveway going into where the fence is. Put a gate in there that goes to the dumpsters and make that space usable to you and to your business and maximize the potential of what that space can do to you. No, I don't want you to pave it. I don't want you to turn into this...I don't want towers in there or anything like that. But if it's zoned that way and we're gonna use it that way, then do it in a way that's presentable and, you know, appreciates the value of your property, but appreciates the value of our property and makes it easier to drive by and doesn't, you know, doesn't insult your neighbors. And that's part of it. So that's all I get to say.
Thank you, Mr. Waters.
Appreciate you letting me.
Jillian, as we consider this and discuss it, can you take a quick look at the site plan ordinances with respect to buffering between a commercial and a residential site? What would be the appropriate buffering on this situation? Thank you, Mr. Waters. Is there anyone else who wishes to weigh in as part of the public hearing? Yes, but you're not part of the public hearing. You'll be the applicant. You get to have your say here in a second. Anybody else that's not the applicant who wishes to weigh in on this? Okay, close the public hearing. Come on back for Mr. Frazier. Let me ask you a couple of questions about the storage trailer as well that I had intended, but I'd forgotten until some of the public testimony. Is there water service in your trailer?
No water or electrical.
No electrical, no heat, no nothing, no utilities at all?
Storage.
Utilities anywhere on Lot 19?
Nada.
Okay. As a part of this site plan, if you intend to have them, you need to propose it. And if you tell us that you're not, then you're not.
No plans to.
Okay. What would you like to rebut that you heard from the neighbors?
Vehicle maintenance. I try not to do any kind of maintenance there. Emergency maintenance is one thing, a blown shock, a wheel bearing that blows on the way home, that's one thing. All of our scheduled maintenance is done at Gene's Auto, and we can give you guys receipts for oil changes and all that other stuff. Small maintenance air filter, yeah. I mean, everybody changes the air filter in their...on their lots. I mean, as far as vehicle maintenance, we're not doing oil changes and transmission flushes and all that stuff. We're doing...
No, wheels and wheel bearings and shocks and things, that's significant maintenance on the trucks.
That's more like emergency, like it blew there and the spring was broken, like that sort of thing. We...yes, we probably could have had it towed or something. That's one thing. The vehicle did catch fire. I mean, I've driven about a million miles in my life. I've never had a vehicle fire. I'm sure none of you guys have had vehicle fires. When I was here at the zoning board, the other ladies that she'd had a vehicle fire kind of threw my whole, like, everybody doesn't have vehicle fires, so.
I never have either, but I understand that those things happen, and I'm not necessarily criticizing that. But on the vehicle maintenance, as you come forward with a site plan, I think you need to be prepared for a condition of approval from this board that says zero vehicle maintenance on the site.
That's fine, okay.
It means if you have an emergency breakdown, you take it somewhere else.
Okay, that's fine.
Whoever fixes trucks.
All right. As far as the side access, I'd like to not have any kind of vehicular access to that side. Keeps everything going through our side lot, keeps everything obscured as well. Being in the critter control business, we do have a lot of people who think that we are trapper bobs and that we could kill everything. So we do run into a lot of animosity as far as that goes. And I don't want to be attracting anything or have people have access to that side lot to do any kind of bad things.
To the extent that you're using a shared driveway between the two sites, I think that that's a good approach, but it gives you the opportunity to do a whole lot of screening in front of that trailer.
Right. And I have no problems adding screening there. I think that's fine. As far as the dumpsters, putting screening, as far as like doors and a fence in front of that, I'm fine with that. I'd like to maintain the dumpsters there rather than having to cut a whole bunch of large pines.
Either that or take the stuff to the dump once in a while and don't save it for a month. What do we know about buffers and zones?
Category C.
Which would be?
It would be...there's four different types.
You got your mic on, Jillian?
Yeah, I can't hear you too well.
Do you want me to read off the different types?
Yeah, give us at least a sense of summary of what the type Cs are.
So type one would be a buffer area not less than 10 feet wide containing a stockade or privacy fence or solid wall, not less than six feet in height, not less than one evergreen tree per 10 linear feet. Shrubs or clusters of perennial flowering plants of similar size and massing to a shrub may be added. Supplemental perennial or annual flowering plants are encouraged. Buffer areas should be arranged with plantings facing in toward the site with the good side of the fence or wall facing outward.
Which it is.
So that's type one. And it ranges to type four, which is a buffer area not less than 50 feet wide containing natural pre-existing woodland or partial woodland vegetation. Additional evergreen tree plantings should be used to fill in gaps and natural vegetation where necessary. And also clusters of perennial flowering plants or amounts of shrubs encouraged. And type four buffers should generally be limited to rear yard areas of the site. There's two other types as well.
Well, that's...
Well, the type four is between...what is the one between commercial and residential? I think that's the one we're interested in.
It's a type four under the C.
It's a type four?
Yeah. It's C4, not D4, which is usually what we see with the industrials and the residential.
Particularly the emphasis that should be limited to the rear of a site, screening it from neighbors, so therefore we are type four is...
Probably what you're looking at. So when we're done here tonight, you get a chance to speak with staff about what goes forward. They'll explain to you what that means with buffers. And you're gonna need to propose a plan for how you're gonna buffer it, and the board may approve the plan you propose or ask you to make some changes to it as you come back. But I think that my advice to you is to be sensitive to what your neighbors have told you tonight about how they feel.
Wasn't aware of any of their concerns, so.
You know, they all...everybody's most significant investment in their life is their home. And everybody wants their home to be near other homes, which is why we put them where we put them. To have a storage trailer next to it and trucks with the axles taken off and those sorts of things certainly doesn't help anybody's property value. I don't know if anybody's gonna put a number on it and say, "Oh, yeah, that cost you X off your property value." But you...I'm sure you can be sensitive to what their thoughts are. So proposing a whole lot of screening to what's going on to make it as visually hidden. And since what you talk about with your business and what people think of your business, you're probably interested in not being all that visible as well.
Yep. I would just like to say one more thing. This whole thing goes back to when we originally purchased our lot in '08. We actually had to purchase portions of Lot 19 to make our lot legal. Once we bought Lot 19, we had verbal conversations with Nancy Lafferty, who used to be down at a community development. And she said, "As long as there was no outside views and you had people coming and going from the property, we didn't have to go through all of this." So we went two and a half years of what was verbally told to us before everything happened. So it wasn't like I was trying to obscure anything. It's just I had already had verbal conversations and...
Nancy Larson, by the way.
Larson, sorry, yes.
With respect to that, and I know that there were some comments from some of the others, it has always been my approach to this, to see somebody, if you're out of compliance, come in and get in compliance.
Right.
It's not...I'm not here to whack anybody on the head with that stuff. The zoning board may choose to deny the relief that you need and that sort of thing, and that can certainly happen. It's within their jurisdiction to do that. And they haven't in your case.
Yeah.
But I'm not looking to hold you to any higher standard other than what the regulations require.
Right, right.
Simply because you've been out of compliance and you're trying to correct that situation.
Yeah. But my point was that I had already come to them and asked, "Hey, is there anything that I need to do?" And she said, "No." So it's not like this is an afterthought thing. It's, I thought we were all in compliance and everything was all set.
Okay. Are there other comments or questions from members of the board?
The only thing I noticed looking at the plans, you have part of the Babusik Brook runs through the bottom corner of your property.
Of my personal property, yes.
Yes, of the...yeah, of 20. It's just a sign...I mean, presumably you're taking precautions so that nothing you do in the back there gets into the...
That's all flooded, so, I mean, we're not even accessing it, so.
Okay, fair enough.
The only cleared area is what's kind of denoted.
I know it's only a small touch of it.
Yeah. Anything else, guys?
This is your pre-hearing conference, so we're here to answer your questions that you need in order to move forward. So if you're comfortable moving forward.
I'm comfortable with everything as far as the screening and everything. That goes fine. The...with the trees, do they need to be evergreen? Or do they...because we were gonna be doing partial evergreen as far as the hemlocks, as well as hocks and maples that we were moving.
I think you need to consider what the objective of the screening is, and if you can come up with a plan that's effective, then you've come up with a plan that's effective.
Evergreen across the front with a deciduous behind it?
Certainly sounds fairly effective.
Evergreen requirements, you take one, one per 10, every 10 minutes.
Yeah, okay, right.
So one situation between...
Does it say anything about specific species or just evergreen?
There are suggested species, but...
We were gonna be moving hemlocks already existing on the property.
I think that that's fine. I think that although it's an evergreen, stay away from, you know, white pines, because a hundred-foot tall pine tree doesn't do anything.
I've got lots of white pines. I'm not a fan of white pines.
What's that?
I said, "I've got lots of white pines. I'm not a fan of white pines."
Well, fan or not, they don't buffer.
Yeah, no.
They don't work as a buffer, so.
They're tall and not so much.
Absolutely.
And the most important thing is if you work with the three people in the community development, I'm sure you'll find it, they'll help you all they can.
Yeah, they've been great so far.
Well, there you are. You'll win in the end.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Frazier, and going for the explanation.
All right.
And you don't need any votes from us tonight because it's just a pre-submission hearing.
Okay.
So we will see you when you choose to come forward, if you do choose to come forward.
You'll do everything your thing, and I'll get a letter from CD, and you can go from there.
On a pre-submission hearing, I don't know that there's a letter because there's no approval. But you need to get in communication with them because although you've got the zoning board's approval, you don't have site plan approval on your commercial site.
Okay.
So you remain out of compliance until you accomplish that.
All right. Give you guys a few days to get your stuff to community development and talk to them next week.
There, there. They've got it.
Call me tomorrow if you want.
Fortunately. All right.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Item six on our agenda is KJB Ventures LLC. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a modification to a previously approved site plan to increase building square footage from 3,000 to 4,200 square feet at four Dobson Way. Change the use from retail to medical office and make minor site improvements on both lots. The parcels are located at two and four Dobson Way in the C2 General Commercial and Oakford Conservation Districts, tax map 3D Lot 3-1 and 3-2. Jillian, do we need to know anything before we hear from the applicant?
This is an amendment to a previously approved site plan. They wish to change the use on one of the lots from retail to medical office, make minor site improvements on both lots, and to increase the building square footage from 3,000 to 4,200 square feet.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself. Tell the board what you got for a plan.
Is it 42 or 4,000?
Forty-two hundred?
Forty-two hundred.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Bill Wilks. I'm a principal of KJB Ventures. And I'm with Tom Zajac from Hayner Swanson. And I think you're aware of the project we're doing up on Dobson Way. We are in the process of building two buildings there. One will be occupied and is currently leased to a company called Convenient MD, which is an urgent care facility. In the process of building the second building, which was slated to be a retail building for multiple possible uses. We have a potential tenant that would be complementary to the medical building. It would be a primary care provider. And in order to facilitate their requirements, we need to expand the back of the building. So I'll leave it at that and let Tom go through the details.
Thanks, Bill. I'm Tom Zajac, a civil engineer from Hayner Swanson in Asherwood. As Bill said, we were before you back in March for the original site plan and minor subdivision. I'll just walk you through that real quick and then highlight the changes that bring us before you here tonight.
Please.
We are map 3D lots 3-3-1 and 3-3-3-3-2, corner of Camp Sergeant Road and Dobson Way. The site is 1.56 acres in Zone C2 General Commercial. We're abutted by Dobson Way to the north, Camp Sergeant Road to the east, the Mobile Home Park to the south, and an existing retail development to the west. As I said, back in March of 2014, we were approved for a site plan and a minor subdivision plan. The subdivision plan was a one into two for financing purposes. KJB Ventures owns both lots and intends to do so for the foreseeable future. We did receive three variances at the time from the zoning board of adjustment for lot depth and rear yard setbacks for Lot 3-3-1 and frontage on a public road for Lot 3-3-2. The site plan back in March was for two buildings in similar location, as you're seeing there. It was for a 5,000-square-foot medical office building. That has not changed. As Bill said, they intend to occupy it with Convenient MD, an urgent care facility, hopefully will open later this year. At the time, we had proposed a 3,000-square-foot retail building, essentially 40 feet wide by 70 feet, 75 feet in depth, as seen from Dobson Way. And what we did at the time was, as you know, in 2004, this project, this site is an out parcel of the Greater Shaw's Shopping Center, which had assumed a project on this pad and had submitted stormwater and traffic reports at the time. So what we did in March was show that our impact was less than that. And like Bill said, the site is currently under construction. What we would like to do is bump out the back of what we're calling Building B, which is on Lot 3-3-2, which is the one on the top of the page. It would be extended by about 30 feet, which would bring the total building square footage from 3,000 square feet to 4,200 square feet. We would also like to change the use, as Bill said, from retail, which we had shown back in March, to medical office use. Specifically, we're looking at a primary care use, something complementary to the urgent care use that we are proposing on the other building.
A single primary care practice or more than one?
It's one organization. I'm not sure exactly what you mean by that question. I mean, it wouldn't be several independent doctors. It's one organization, and they would have three doctors designated for that location.
Okay. So basically, the entire building is one suite. It's all interconnected. There's no separate units that could be leased separately.
That is correct.
Perfect. Thanks.
I did bring a rendered copy of the plan from back in March if we have questions. Basically, we've removed some pavement that was behind that original approval and replaced it with building area.
I understand you need less parking now with the new use. Medical's less than retail?
Yes.
How many fewer spaces do you have now?
Fifty-two parking spaces.
Fewer than before, or 52 is what's left?
Fifty-two total, which is five less than the March plan. We lost four spaces behind the building as a result of this expansion. And also, post-approval back in March, we worked with Captain Manuelli to provide an ambulance loading area for the Convenient MD building. And you can see that it's located between the two buildings on the plan. It's just basically a double-wide parking area that's striped off, so that they can quickly load and unload potential patients. And that was a request of the fire department. So in summary, we lost five spaces, 52 total for the site, which combined is, is well over the required parking. We're making minor adjustments to utility services. As I said, stormwater impacts are less than the previously approved plan. We're reducing the impervious area by 700 square feet. Similarly, traffic impacts are less to the retail use. A revised lighting plan, a photometric plan, is being prepared as we speak and will be submitted to staff for their review. And there's no change to landscaping based on the March plan. No change to architecture. The building design will match what we were approved for back in March, and those building elevations, the revised plans have been submitted to Snow removal was a topic that comes up. Again, as we presented to the board back in March, a couple areas of the site have been designated as snow storage area. The site is rather tight, being a, a commercial site. And as Mr. Wilks had previously given testimony, once the piles are too big, they will be trucked off-site. And Mr. Wilks had also previously agreed to use a Green Snow Pro certified contractor.
Sounds good. Where are the snow stores?
Long Camp Sergeant.
Okay, I got you.
Which page are they showing on?
They should be on the site layout plan and also shown on the landscaping plan.
While they're looking in that, could I ask one query? I noticed for the proposed building, you've only got one handicap parking space shown. I am amazed. I would have thought, given that it's gonna be primary care, you'd need more than one handicap parking space. I'm not saying what the regulations are. I'm just saying, I think you need more than one.
Thank you.
You're only showing one on the, on the plan.
Correct.
That's not the answer that I wanted to hear.
We, we think that the one handicap space in that location will, will service this tenant. If more are required, we can provide additional handicap parking. As you see, they will be sharing parking, both normal spaces and also handicap spaces with Lot A. If additional handicap spacing is needed, we do have one extra space there in the front of the building that, that could be provided.
To say they could share a handicap parking space between two buildings is just a non, a non, it just doesn't work. I'm telling you, if you put two in for Convenient, Convenient MD, and I'm surprised only two, I think for the primary care, I cannot believe any primary care unit I've been to will has only one. I think you've, that's gonna be my requirement. You're gonna put that second one in now, not if needed. No. You need it, I'm telling you. I mean...
Jillian, what's the requirement for, for number of handicap spaces? How's it driven?
Regulations say that they need to be in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, as amended. I'm not sure off the top of my head what those requirements are.
What that renders, okay. So when we get to signing final plans or whatever, you're gonna have to meet Americans with Disabilities, whatever that dictates. If it's one or two or five, whatever they are.
We will check back with our, with our tenant and make sure we are in compliance with the...
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have comments or questions?
No, I'm, I'm pretty well set with this.
Yeah.
Tom, do you have more that you want to offer us for explanation?
No, that's all. That was the end of my presentation. Thank you.
We're advised by staff that we don't need to vote to accept it, because this is an amendment to a prior plan, although we certainly could accept it just to be a little neat and tidy with the process. What will the board is on that?
I would make a motion to accept the plan for review.
Is there a second?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to accept the application. There are, are there any waivers to consider, or is it just the same as before?
No, there are no waivers, Mr. Chairman. Just some conditions that have been put together by Mr. Thompson on his memo of October the 15th.
Okay. And based on our discussion tonight, I think we'd add a condition that the applicant verify compliance with the ADA on parking?
Mm-hmm.
Any other? Do you add anything else in our discussions?
No, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any abutters or interested citizens wish to weigh in before the board considers final action?
Tom wanted to say something.
Okay. It's no abutters anyway, so we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Tom?
Yeah, I just, I must have missed your elevations last time, because when I drive by and I see what you're building there, it doesn't look like a one-story building. It's much larger than the other buildings that are out there. And I was really shocked. It looked like a two-story building going in. I don't know whether you're, you're putting up those big towers simply to be signposts or, or what, but it doesn't fit in with the flavor or the character of the area of the town. I'm a little surprised by all that.
Actually, that, that, that is done from a marketing standpoint. That's not a primary intersection. It's a secondary intersection. So the tenant wanted a tower structure for visibility, for signage purposes, and that's why it looks that way. I think as the project is completed, if you look at, we have a, yeah, right there, it, it's gonna look probably nicer from a construction standpoint than, than the other buildings that are there. I mean, it's not, the scale's not gonna change, obviously, but the actual construction materials, I think, will look nicer than the ones that are built, currently built in that shopping center. But that was done from a marketing standpoint for visibility.
I understand that, and it's extremely visible. And we've made other people lower their signs and do other things to make them a little bit less obnoxious than the past. This has already gone through, and there's not a whole lot I can do. I just, I was just floored, actually, when I drove home and saw that second story going up there.
It really isn't a, it look, does look like a second story?
It's the height of a second story, whether you call it one or not. It's, it's clearly the height of a second story. I mean, you could, there's, there's no doubt in my mind you could put an office up there.
Interestingly, and I'll just add this, we looked into that quite a bit, and our architect, working with the tenant, this was primarily driven by the tenant. We had the tenant before we designed the building. And Meramec does not have a height requirement, so I just pass that on. I mean, we, we pretty much are within the standards of a lot of buildings that are built nowadays. A lot of towers are used nowadays versus what was used before. A lot of parapets are put in to screen mechanicals. A lot of times, if you go up and down Continental Boulevard or anywhere other places in town, you're gonna see the HVAC equipment on the roofs. Part of doing the towers and the parapets is to have it scaled properly. I will agree that that is a larger tower, but it also is that secondary intersection, and that's the reason that the tenant drove that type of a structure. Believe me, it costs more money to build, so if we could have done it shorter, it would have been less expense for us.
Okay. Traffic-wise on your parking, it doesn't appear that there's, except for those two little lots, any parking that's really adjacent to your second building there. And everybody coming from their cars is gonna be walking across your traffic lanes. Can you address that a little bit, as to, as to where you're expecting your, your people to walk and park and get in and out of this secondary building, second building?
As, as I stated before, we, we envision that these two sites will, will be working together in, in terms of parking and access. They share access on Dobson Way, and patients will come into the site and, and start filling up the parking there. We envision the employees will, will use the southern part of the site to the rears of the building to park and, and, and share, if needed, the parking spaces between the two uses.
Where are the proposed entrances on the buildings?
The proposed entrance of, of Building B is on the front of the building facing Dobson Way. And the front of the building on Building A is on the corner, the northeast corner of the building.
Make that the west corner and you'd be okay?
Yeah.
That's, that's the west side up there, right?
I'm sorry?
That's, the top of the building in that picture is the west side of the building, not the east.
Correct.
Yeah.
Apologize.
I don't know if I'm repeating what he already said, but this is the front of the building. So you've got all this parking here, and this is the front of the building. So you've got all these parking spots here, which are very prime spots for this guy, and these are prime spots for this guy. And it, it's actually a lot tighter and closer when you're on the site. So if you park your car here, it's a very short walk to the front door.
But, but all of that parking is directly across your inflow and exit of traffic in that, in that entire, every car that goes in and out of there has to go through that little bottleneck, if you will.
Right.
And so everybody's walking across that.
Yeah.
There's no sidewalks. There's no signage. There's no...
Well, I mean, there's, there'll be striping and so forth, and they'll, you know, there's cur, you know...
Well, when you say striping, I, can you or would you consider striping a crosswalk, so that if I park along Dobson Way, there's something that tells me where I should cross the parking lot? And that cars will stop for me when I try to? And I don't know, I'm not sure where I would point to say it ought to go here.
Yeah.
'Cause it's a little bit of a funny shape on the parking lot. But generally speaking, even with a gas station, if you put the parking away from the building like that, we would have you stripe an area for people to walk through.
I guess my response to that would be, we could look at it. I, I think that, based on the size of these buildings and the use that we're proposing, they were, would be rather less intense than other uses, where you'd see heavy traffic in and out. We do envision people parking throughout the site, both along Dobson Way and between the buildings. I guess what, what the board is referencing is mainly for Building B and crossing generally where the, the striped handicap space is. And we could, we could take a look at putting some striping there. I'm not so sure if we would, we would want to concentrate all the pedestrians to use that location, as it is the closest point to the, to the access. And cars would be making that left-hand turn there off of Dobson, quickly taking that left into the site, which we feel is, is surely a comfortable move. But I'm not so sure we want to be concentrating all the, all the pedestrians there, but we'd be happy to take a look at it.
I don't think that you could. I don't think that somebody that parks where the one is on the spaces across from the medical office building are gonna walk all the way to the west to get to the handicap space before they cross the path. They're gonna walk straight to the door they want to go to.
Correct.
Which is why I was saying it's hard to point to the place to say, "Put it here." But on the other hand, you've got nine and eight spaces, and then on the back of the building, another nine spaces that someone's gotta walk through the travel lanes to get to the building.
This, this topic did come up back in March through, during the plan review process. The peer, peer review consultants did bring up the issue, and we did discuss with, with planning staff where a proper location or if a location would be needed. And it was determined at the time that, that a crosswalk was not warranted. But if the board wishes, we'd, we'd be happy to take another look and work with staff on looking at a location for a crosswalk. The two, the two areas would be out by the, the first handicap parking as you, as you enter the site. You could also extend some kind of crosswalk from where the ambulance-only loading zone is, across the shared access drive to Building B, and provide a ramp in that location.
I don't know. What do you guys think? Does that make any sense? Because if you put it where the people ain't gonna walk, you're just wasting paint.
Yeah.
Well, so the other advantage, if I, if I may, is that you indicate to people that are taking this quick left off of Dobson Way and a quick left into the parking lot, there are people that are potentially walking across there, and they need to be careful or cautious. And the striped area there would tend to get their attention a little bit, till it's worn out. But at least originally, the intent is to try and make it a little safer for people, since they all have to walk across there, except for the handicap person in one spot. Just, just a, kind of a reminder or a warning to people that there aren't pedestrians.
I mean, my suggestion would be, I don't know if you've got five minutes, but go up to Home Depot of, on 101A. They have just redone their parking lot, and they have made a considerable improvement in the two areas where the majority of people walk across. They have hatched the whole area and put the word "YIELD" in big yellow letters. And I think they've done a super job to get over, instead of the silly little pedestrian walkways, go and have a look at Home Depot and then see if you can't think around what they say.
It's hard to compare those two sites, since the shape of the parking lot is so different and dimensionally so different.
But it's, but it's still the principle. They've actually hatched off a large area so people from the main parking lot will...
And the other thing that they've done is put in a gazillion handicap spaces that are unlikely ever to be used.
I agree with that. I agree with that one.
There's about 900 of them now.
But, but I still like the hatching they've done for the park.
Just a comment, and if you, I'm sure it's easy for you guys to visualize, when you're walking into Shaw's or Pizza Co. or Subway, I mean, it's pretty much the same situation.
No, but they do have some hatched area in front of Shaw's and one towards the Subway restaurant. But their, even their, their layout is so different than yours that you just don't have one place where people are gonna go to. They're gonna come from all over places. Maybe it's as simple, instead of painting on the, on the pavement, some kind of a little, you know, "Yield to Pedestrians" sign or something that's, you know, slows people down. What do you guys think of that? Or what do you guys think of that?
We'd be happy to work with staff on, on talking through a, a solution on that. I, I think cars are moving pretty slow through there. Most of the traffic will be coming off of Dobson Way and taking a left onto the site. There's a pretty good line of sight there. There's not much landscaping existing along that side of Dobson Way, so we'd be happy to look at a sign or, or some sort of striping on the interior of the site if...
I think if you work with staff, that's enough for me. I don't wanna torture this issue anymore.
I'm satisfied with that.
Then I, one other question, if I could. The back of the building that you've extended out, you, you moved it 30, no, some number of feet, 30 feet?
Thirty feet, correct.
Closer to the, to the fence, I guess, where the trailers are and stuff like that.
Correct.
Manufactured homes?
Man, yeah. Whatever. The people behind there that are on your property, I understand that. Can, can you talk about what the difference is between what was there before? I mean, it used to be a, a road through there that, that fire and people could get around, and now you can't. So you're kind of dead-ended once you get in there.
Correct. So I, I did, I'm sorry. I did review the plan with, with Captain Manuelli. He had no issues as far as access to the site for the fire department. That was more of a site driveway and to kinda keep circulation going around the building if needed. Certainly didn't see that as a, something that was definitely needed as far as an access point. As I said, the building previously was, was 40 by 75, so now it's 40 by 105. We've, we've bumped it back 30 feet. But if you look at where the curb comes down from the Convenient MD building, that line of curb continued up, up towards the western part of the site. So we're actually pulling the back, the impervious area and the development back farther from that fence, as we were approved for back in, in March. Also, as was discussed earlier tonight, we are under a buffer here, a 10-foot buffer zone with the stockade fence, because we are a commercial to an industrial, I mean, I'm sorry, a commercial to a residential use. And, and that landscaping that was reviewed and approved back in March has not changed along the back half of the site.
But the, the wall of your building has gotten 30 feet closer. How, how far is the wall of your building from their fence right now?
25 feet at the nearest point.
Okay. So it was, it was 55 feet?
Correct.
And now it's 20?
Correct. Like I said, in the plan in March, we had a 22-foot site drive plus another 20 feet of parking in that back area, plus some buffer zone on the side of the building, so...
And having listened, Tom, I'm not criticizing you, but having listened to the residents in those manufactured homes who've complained in the past to this board about people starting their cars late at night and disturbing them, they're actually gonna get less disturbance from motor cars.
Not much.
Not much, but I'm only, I'm only best minding.
Yeah, I mean, the driveway doesn't go behind the building, so they're gonna get the, the back of a building with some trees and nothing really going on there, rather than the potential to have cars driving.
Cars starting up. I mean, it's a...
Well, not just starting, but driving. But anyway.
The elevation of the back of the building is, is a story and a half or so. It's well above their fence and stuff like that. So they're looking at a, a wall that's a lot closer to them than it was.
There's no tower feature on the back half of that.
No, but there's the parapet, so it's like a story and a half. It's not two stories. It's, but it's, it's definitely tall, if I look at your elevation picture.
I mean, we'll take the parapet off if you want.
Well, I mean, I, I'm just wondering...
No, we put, we insisted...
Then you have mechanicals exposed.
We insisted you put the parapet on to hide the mechanicals, because they are much of a, more of a nuisance than anything else.
Yes.
No, I agree, but Tom's right. It's a 26-foot-high building in the back, so it's gonna be visible over and over the fence, though. But if it doesn't have any entrances or traffic in it, I don't know. How, what kind of trees are there? I know you're just leaving the existing trees. You're not doing anything with them, but what, what kind of trees are there?
I think, I'm sorry, I don't have it off the top of my head. I think they're maybe eight foot...
Tall, short?
Eight foot tall, tall. There's, there's...
Eight foot tall?
Eight foot tall, I think, are providing...
Are the members of the board have any more questions for the applicant or discussion? There are no waivers, so if there's no more discussion, then the appropriate course of action is for the board to consider disposition.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We grant the, accept the amended site plan as we've discussed this evening, subject to all the notes and requests that Mr. Thompson put in his memo dated October 15, 2014.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Disco. Is there any thing that we discussed tonight that would be added to this, or I don't think we did?
The ADA.
The ADA, confirming the ADA. Thank you, Zina.
Did we ask that they review with staff one more time the... Did we ask that they review with staff one more time the, the possible addition of crosswalks if appropriate?
Yeah, or a sign or something.
Or signage to improve pedestrian safety in accessing the buildings.
That's acceptable, yeah.
Just work with staff and come to some reasonable improvements if you can make them.
Thank you. If the pedestrian is hurt, he's in the right place.
That's true. You couldn't get hurt in a better place.
My secure again, I apologize.
So those two additional conditions of approval to confirm the ADA situation on parking and to discuss with staff, the pedestrian situation, is that consistent with the intent of both the maker and the seconder of the motion?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Does the, does the intended signage on the building meet our, our requirements? Or is there?
Leave that alone. The zoning board's already involved.
I think the zoning board's given them a variance.
The zoning board's already...
Given them a variance for signage?
Yeah.
Zoning board's given convenient MD a variance for signage. I haven't seen any sign plans for the new user yet.
Just to, you know, just for your information on that, I, I did not go to the zoning board, but I know what transpired. The, the variance let them increase the size of the sign on the broader section of the front of the building, but the side signage is actually going to be smaller than what is allowed. So I mean...
When you say the broader side, you mean the side facing Camp Sergeant Road?
No, the side facing the highway.
That's Camp Sergeant Road. Yeah.
Well, Camp Sergeant's curves around. I can show you.
Okay.
There's the highway down there. That's Dobson Way is...
This sign here.
Okay.
This sign is just smaller.
Okay, but you got a variance and so you're all buttoned up for that and whether you have one for the next one, you've got to sort that out.
It'll come back, yeah, if you want to change it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
They've already got one there.
Haven't been there in a while.
111 to Wyndham, you can see the size of the sign.
Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of granting the amendment to the site plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Opposed.
3-1-0 for final approval. So you are approved. Counselor Keating is opposed. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for coming in and for the presentation. It was very good. Item number seven on our agenda is discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern, and there are two items listed there. One is auto fair. I mean, it's a discussion of the revised plans to address final conditions. And our discussion with them was that they were going to revise the plans a little bit to clip the corner off the parking lot and show us some elevations of the Enterprise Building.
Of what building?
Of the Enterprise Rent-A-Car Building. Jillian, do we need to know anything before you hear from the applicant?
That's pretty much what they're here to discuss.
Just discussion tonight, no approvals or questions?
Or required, yeah. We gave them final approval. We just asked them to come back and show us this stuff.
Oh, okay.
As a discussion item.
Yes.
Did we?
Okay, I guess we'll start with this part. Katie Weiss with Bedford Design. I'm also here with Bob Baskerville of Bedford Design. We're here to talk to you about things we've changed per your request with the approval last month. You asked for some updates. I'm actually going to start with the architecturals. You asked us to look at the architecture and perhaps change the building a bit. So we sent the comments back to the architect and he added a soap roof and removed some of the green that was around the building. And someone had requested that I put in the plantings. So those are a kind of a depiction of the plantings. They're all in flower at the moment in this picture, but they won't, wouldn't all be in flower at the same time. So it looks very bright and pink, but it would be different times of the year that they would be in bloom. The other thing you asked us to discuss was the pedestrian traffic through the site that was happening, people coming down Natticook, cutting through the Abutters' property and then through our site. So this is in the bottom right-hand corner, the butter on the right, our site on the left. So I met with Patricia and Kenneth Morse last week, so this you don't have in your set, but I...
I don't have anything, so. I don't have anything.
You don't have anything in my set? No.
Oh, okay.
Just walk us through what you're showing us.
Sure. Bob will pass out the plan for you to see. I brought 11-by-17s. So on the left side of the plan is the screening that we were proposing when we were here and were approved. It's a buffer C type three, which is a particular number of trees within 20 feet, deciduous and evergreen. When we met and went and met with the Morse's, there's a portion of the property right now that they're mowing and using, not using, but they want to keep free of more plantings. So when I met with them and then met with staff afterwards to kind of discuss our options, what we decided to do was... Put in a six-foot stockade fence. This is a picture of the kind of stockade fence we're thinking about. In this portion that is wooded here, this area is wooded, you can see through here a little bit, but mostly this is pretty well, well-established. So we're putting in a type one buffer, which is the six-foot stockade fence. And then when we come to here, the plantings that we were proposing were in the grassed area that they'd like to keep grassed. So we switched to a type four buffer here. And I did use white pines. And the reason I chose white pines is because they like partial shade. There are a lot of evergreens that like partial shade, so that's why they're in the woods a lot. So they are six of them in here. There's a large circle, that's how large they get. And in the future, if the sewer moratorium is released, we will be doing something on this part of the site. So the owner didn't want to invest in a lot of trees that would be cut down in the future.
If the what moratorium?
Sewer moratorium.
The what? So you can't get connected to the town sewer from there?
Correct, from, for the, to do anything else on the site. So that's why we're just doing the Enterprise and then the parking in the back, which doesn't need any utilities, any sewer utilities.
So can you locate this for me? I have no idea what we're talking about.
Sure.
Sure.
Sorry.
Here's Natticook Road. This is the, if you think of Natticook Road and then you've got Continental Boulevard, there's Natticook Road with the little, where the...
Yeah, the spa is.
The spa places. And the Morse's home is, is the last home which comes off the end of that dead end, if you like, because of the dead end which was created. This corner here, where they put in the 65-foot fence, is that fence is going up there.
I can give you a better overview.
Perfect, yeah. Now you've got the auto fair straight up.
Yes, you can see, this is the auto fair Volkswagen right here. The Continental Boulevard comes in, 101A is right here. This is the old Natticook Road. Innovations is this building right here. So we're talking about Ken and Patricia who live at the dead end road. And we zoomed in to this section right here is what we were talking about. There were pedestrians, they had come to the meeting last month and said there were pedestrians coming up their driveway and through the property to get to Continental Boulevard. So we went and met with them to figure out a way we could kind of prevent people from doing that. So that's why we're doing the fence.
If your fence only goes partially up their driveway to the clearing that they'd like to keep, what's going to stop people from walking where they're already walking?
They didn't want us to continue the fence through there. They, they had asked us to move the fence farther onto our property and, and that's not something the owner was willing to do. And they didn't want any plantings. I mentioned prickly shrubs we could put in the, inside the woodland area and they were not interested in any prickly shrubs.
So you and they are both happy, but we didn't accomplish anything for pedestrian traffic?
Well, we did put the fence in for a portion of the area where people do come up the, the front part of the driveway.
Yeah, so you funnel them all the way down the driveway now.
Yeah, just maybe a little more inconvenient for them, but you haven't solved the problem.
As long as you and they are happy, I mean, I don't know what to say about it, but...
A portion of people will go this way. There's that, you can see if you're on the site, I didn't bring pictures, but there are, there's an area where you can see people climb up this way to go through the site. The idea is that if you have the, the fence here, people will think that the fence continues.
Maybe visually for a while. So it's a wooden stockade fence, not the easiest thing to jump over?
Wooden stockade fence, yeah, six-foot.
I know we talked about it and I don't remember why we discarded the idea of running a sidewalk from the end of Natticook Road down to connect to the sidewalk that's already in place on that intersection.
Well, one of the discussions was that this is a DOT area. It's not...
Yeah.
It, they, they don't want pedestrians, they put a fence here particularly to keep people from walking straight. There's a four-foot fence here and a big sign. They don't want people going this way through the site and onto Continental Boulevard.
So that fence is already there and that's the DOT fence?
Yes, this is an existing DOT fence and a stone wall here and then the driveway. And that's why people are going around because they can't get through here. There's a lot of vegetation that's grown over through the wall, so people can't jump over it easily.
And in any event, you don't own it, so you can't make you build one.
Well, we could request permission for them to build one.
But there's fence from...
But there's a fence there.
It's a mesh fence that actually starts from where...
I see it on the...
Natticook Road bends down.
That's the purpose of the fence for kind of...
Yeah. Well, we need to talk to DOT someday, but if the Morse's are happy, I guess we have to go with this. It's not the ideal situation. I think it's just going to reroute the traffic, but...
Well, I mean, it's, when they were here testifying about the frequency with which people were crossing their lots, it seemed like they were estimating it to be quite a lot of pedestrian traffic that seemed maybe like they were more sensitive to it and, and observing perhaps more than there actually was on the ground. Because I couldn't, they were saying several times a day, people are walking down the driveway and I just had, always had a hard time imagining that to be the case, so.
If that's the case, that's just people walking down the street. It's not people going to auto fair.
No, they're not at all going to auto fair. What they're getting to is the end of Natticook Road where that hammerhead is, and instead of going down to Continental Boulevard and walking along the road...
Which they can't do.
They're going up these Morse's private property to get up to that clearing and then crossing over auto fair property to go to, I don't know, McDonald's or whatever's across that way. And, boy, it seems like a long way around to get to...
Well, the other option is to walk out to, to the cutoff and try and walk down there, and that's worse.
Walking along Continental Boulevard with no sidewalk, and I don't think it's particularly level along that way, so very difficult way to go. But I just didn't imagine there was that many people coming down there to get to McDonald's on foot or whatever, wherever those people went.
Well, I have seen, I have seen people from the residential area, they're walking for exercise. And I, I could imagine that they walk down there to the end and they want to keep on going for whatever reason.
The reward.
And DOT has made a mess putting that fence in the wall there. I mean, that, you know...
Yeah, and we're going to extend from where their four-foot fence ends with a six-foot stockade fence.
For 65 more feet.
For 65 more feet.
And it is up an incline here, so it'll be taller than six feet because you'll have to climb up the bank and then go over the six-foot fence.
Awesome that you guys are doing it. I don't think it's your responsibility.
Is there any way, any way or any desire with the Morse's to post the open area with no trespassing signs or that sort of thing?
We could, we could put a no trespassing sign, but it would look like it was no trespassing on this property, not this property. I don't...
I think we're solving a problem that doesn't exist.
He didn't like it and he told me to take it off the fence.
You had what? You had those signs?
He had the sign on the original and he told me to take it off.
That's why I haven't said anything to him. I said something wrong, so.
We could put a sign up if, if, a no trespassing sign.
Very bright.
It was one of the red signs that says, "No trespassing private property."
I guess I'd leave it to the Abutters' one.
That would be if they wanted it, I mean...
No, they, they didn't, they didn't mention wanting it. I mentioned if they could post signs if they wanted to.
Yeah.
There's nothing there, so.
Some remedies are still available to them, right? And we can come back and petition the DOT for permission to cross the property.
I'm certainly happy with what you've presented for the Enterprise Building. I'm happy with what you've done here and I've seen the drawing of the clipped corner of the parking lot. I guess you're going to show us that second. I'm a little put off that we made you deal with the Abutters' because since they haven't dealt with anything with pedestrians, we've clearly sent you on an errand that didn't necessarily need doing, but...
I volunteered to talk to them as a courtesy because when we looked at the site, we never envisioned people cutting across it like that. It's just one thing that, you know, you look at a site and think...
Is your mic on? Is your mic on?
Nope.
Press that button right in front.
Please repeat. Please repeat.
I said we did that as a courtesy. I told them afterward, we'll talk to them and go talk to them because we just hadn't seen it before to see how we could help.
No, I, I agree with you and I took their complaints at face value when they offered them up and they were describing pedestrians, but clearly if they're satisfied with this plan, and I guess it's visually, you get a fence and you like it, but it didn't stop any pedestrians, it didn't accomplish anything. And I don't know why they...
I guess some of them cut up over the bank, so this stops them. And I think if you want to stop one with the driveway, you're going to have to put up a...
It's getting around that 65-feet of stockade fence, getting up, and then it's, the, the land is less attractive up there.
It, it sends a message too, but it's step one, we can always put up a sign if they want it.
Picture of a pit bull.
I thought the prickly bushes she came up with was a good idea.
That was good.
He said he had plenty of those in the back.
Barberries, yeah.
Walk us through what you did with the corner of the parking lot.
Sure. I took out about 800 square feet and I have to apologize, the site plan still has the old number on it, but I took about 40 feet off here and 40 feet off here and made a little 36-foot area that came off and I added a three-foot berm on top of that. And if you go to sheet seven, no, six? The plantings here, it's a, the type four buffer, so there are evergreen trees in here as well as deciduous and evergreen shrubs, a certain number for every 20 feet are on top of the berm now. And in the detail on sheet 11, it says green slats in the fence, so.
Thank you.
I'm certainly satisfied with that.
No, that was done because you were trespassing in the buffer, in the setback?
No, this, the butter said he had cleared all the way to the property line and was going to see in, into this. So we added the berm and plantings on top of the berm to give more screening.
Yeah, they needed to pull the fence back to have room for the berm and still honor the buffer, but their fence previously was not in the buffer.
The idea of the berm was is then if the headlights come on at the water time, remove a car and block the headlights from shining.
But the corner off the building, was that...
Not building, chain link fence.
Oh, it's a parking lot.
Oh, that's the parking lot?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. It's not...
Yeah, this is a big parking lot with a fence, another parking lot and then Enterprise is down here.
I remember now, yeah. Okay.
There's one little thing I want to mention, just as a, proper word, but just as a courtesy. At the last minute, the owner has suggested, we've discussed with them, I've got a lot up there that'll have only new cars, no truck traffic ever, so you won't have cars up there with a lot of grime and dirt on it. He's asked just as to look at, can we convert it to porous pavement? He's asked just to look at, can we convert it to porous pavement? So I talked to Tim about that, about what we'd do later if we just converted from impervious to porous pavement, and he said we'd require another CLD review, so we might look at it as a new firm decision.
Right, it would just be this, the lock with the...
I think the only observation I'd have instinctively on that is to recognize that porous pavement has some maintenance requirements, and so typically when we've seen that in the patent, we've only come at once, we've required that the applicant file their maintenance plan for the porous pavement.
Okay.
We don't use it a lot, but we get an area here, as you said, there's no truck traffic. The cars parked there should be brand-new cars with no dirt, grime, and sand on them, so it should stay a much cleaner parking lot than a normal one would, and there's nothing falling down onto it. You know, I've been concerned with a lot of ones that get blocked due to sand, silt, whatever. This just looks like it'd be a cleaner situation, more likely it'd ever last longer, so we're just gonna do some research into it.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that we were thinking of doing that, so...
Okay.
Well, I'm all for porous pavement. If it works, I buy into it every time.
And are you, you're not also reducing your drainage handling elsewhere on the site for this, you're treating this site drainage as if it were impervious pavement there?
If we change it to porous, right now we have some underground basins underneath it.
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't need the underground basins.
You wouldn't need those, no, you're quite right.
Okay, okay, so you are reducing...
So we would change the drainage design.
So we probably have an overall review of the drainage design by our consulting engineers.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
We'd have to turn all new calculations to CLD for them to review it, if we do that. I just wanted as a courtesy to mention that it is, it's being discussed.
Thanks, Paul.
That won't get built this fall, so we have the winter just to look at what's going on back there.
Decide what you wanna do, okay. So as far as what we've approved already, it's impervious with some drainage, and if